Okay, good morning. Town of Acton, Maine warns to Bernard Broder, a citizen in the Town of Acton. Greetings. In the name of the state of Maine, we are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town of Acton to qualify to vote in town affairs to assemble at the Acton Elementary School on Saturday, April 12th, 2025, at nine o'clock in the morning to vote on the following articles. Article one, choose a moderator for said meeting. For nominations. Richard Nass has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? Okay, the moderator, remember, has to be voted on by written ballot, giving a minimum of three votes. Hey, Mr. Nass, you have been elected moderator. You're joining me, Pete Estaway. I, Richard Nass, just swear that I will faithfully discharge, so that's my ability to do it in the coming term, being your elected moderator, as of 2025. According to the Constitution of Maine.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for coming. It was a pretty interesting drive in. We had to split vehicles halfway up the hill. This wasn't going to go, so we got the truck. Okay. Let's first do the pledge of allegiance, because the flag is here and there. Pledge of allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so I don't forget to do this at the end. I just want to make sure we write and thank the board of selectmen, the school board, all the people that, and the finance, more finance committee, all the people that have been working on this project for months to get us to this meeting. They deserve our thanks, because it's a tough job. Second, everybody when they came in should have gotten this hat there. Okay? The colored piece of paper is your ticket to vote. And that also is a ticket you're going to be given to come up here with other parts of the voting, the written parts. So don't leave your seat without this if you're coming to drop off your ballot. For all of the hand votes that we do, you're going to need to raise this piece of paper. In addition to that, a pile of specific votes, and they're all labeled either with a warrant article or position that we're talking about, so this should be a pile of papers. In addition to that, is the warrant itself. Unless there's objection, we'll run this meeting according to the guidance given in the Maine moderators' name, which is a fairly simple parliamentary procedure. Nothing difficult, no amended amendments, any of that stuff. It's just make the motion, second it, discuss it, and vote. That's what we're doing today. We may have some non-residents who will need to address it, who want to address it, we'll need to hear from them. So unless there's objection, because the rules require a two-thirds vote of those present, not just present, willing to vote, but those who are present and here, which is very difficult to figure out. Unless there's objection, I'm going to read you a list of names, and soon, unless you object, we're going to allow them to talk, because we need to hear from them. So Jennifer Rue, our clerk of accounting and estate. Lauren Hagecam, our treasurer. Mark Roy, I'm going to start with Mark. Mark Roy is here as the new, he's going to talk. CPA. And so we're going to want, where's Mark? Mark, okay. Bob, you want to say something about Mark?
Yes, Mark is the principal of Boostar Accounting Services, as you may recall. He's been with us now for almost two years. Yeah. And he's been providing the town accounting services through that period that, number one, have given us monthly reports about the status of the town, which all the selectmen and the Morton Finance can receive, which allows us to keep track of everything. He's also been preparing the town's financial statements, which was something we didn't have. We had to wait for the auditors to prepare our statements in the past, and now we're able to see those for the August, September timeframe. And the auditor has then worked on those and wanted those statements. It's made for an extreme length process. Speaking for myself, I'm thrilled that he's joined the town, and I think he provides a great service.
Thank you. On the school side, John Conross, our superintendent. John is here someplace.
I'm back here, Richard.
There he is, in fact, checking out the men's room, boys' room, making sure it's still in service, right? That's the superintendent's school, I think. Paula Lantang, where's Paula? Is she here?
Paula's in the building. She ran up to her office, Richard.
Okay. Brandon Ward, Brandon here?
He will be here by the time we get to the school, but because of weather.
Brandon's our new principal, I guess is the correct way to?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Just moderator?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to announce that David Wychell is out in a plow truck right now. He's taking care of Chaplet, and the roads are so bad here, pass over the road, he decided to stay where he was, and so he may be joining us.
Thank you. If you're here joining us and you're not a voter in Acton, you need to be in the bleachers in the back. Okay, so what we're looking at here now is vote, everybody that's operating the vote in Acton. Okay, what we're going to do today is bring up articles, we're going to make the motion and have it seconded, and then we're going to open it for discussion, okay? Discussion consists of questions, consists of comments, all those are okay. You can advocate for the motion or against it, that means urge other voters to support it or not support it. What we're not going to do is attack somebody. Another speaker, selectmen, school board, we're not doing that. We're not going to have arguments. Arguments, here's how an argument starts. Somebody asks a question, and then right away they don't like the answer, so they want to ask another question. Pretty soon, we're going back and forth, and I call that a conversation. We're not doing that, okay? If you have a question, talk to me, ask me the question, and I'll find somebody to answer it, maybe. It's possible there is no answer to some of these questions, okay? So, no conversations, no arguments, and no attacking anybody. Okay, other than that, we want to hear your questions and your comments, and we want you to advocate, one way or the other, for this stuff, okay? Because you're the one paying the bill, basically. Okay. Article two, are we ready to go? Actually, I forgot one thing. Elias, did you want to say something relative to our state senate?
Yes.
I was informed a couple days ago that our state senator could not be with us, he's actually, he has a job to work instead, surprisingly. And he said Elias would have something to tell us about what he's doing.
Right.
Our senator is Jim Libby.
Thank you. I just received this this morning. Dear friends and neighbors, I apologize for being unable to join you at this year's Acton Town Meeting. Please accept this letter with my regards and a brief update from Augusta. First, thank you for the honor of serving you in this Maine State Senate and for putting your trust in me to be your voice in Augusta. This is my second term in the Maine State Senate since prior service in the late 1990s. Throughout this term, I have made it my goal to educate other legislators, agency personnel, and the governor on what life is currently like in rural towns in southern and western Maine. For example, inflation has had a major impact that has been felt across Senate District 22. Young Mainers now find it significantly more difficult to find a home to own, even in our rural setting. Seniors on a fixed income have trouble simply staying in their own homes due to elevated property taxes. With the cost to run municipalities and schools is escalating, I believe it is incumbent upon the state and federal governments to target spending more wisely on the critical tasks of educating our children, maintaining roads and bridges, and improving existing programs. I took a stand on the Maine State Senate floor and invited other senators to come and visit our towns when they were considering allocating more money to cities at our expense. I'm working hard to find economies of scale and scope so that state government can be more effective. The time has come to reduce financial pressures on Maine citizens. I have also worked to bring taxes down. I'm sponsoring legislation to reinstate the property tax stabilization program. I also presented a bill to lower the excise tax on camper trailers after speaking with a constituent about the issue. I'm happy to report that this bill unanimously passed its first hurdle, the Joint Standing Committee on Taxation. Serving on the education committee, I am working hard to fix Maine's educational system so that our children succeed both now and in the future. I am presenting bipartisan legislation to increase minimum math standards from two to three years. I want to hear from you to better serve you. Please contact my office with any questions or concerns you have. In addition to legislation, I can also aid you in navigating government agencies. You can contact my office, and he leaves the number if anyone wants to write it down, That's 207-287-1505. Or you can email him at jim.libby@legislatureMaine.gov. Additionally, I would also be happy to host students at the State House. Parents, grandparents, and/or teachers who are interested in having students participate in honorary page program can contact me to set up a visit to learn about our government firsthand. Thank you again for allowing me to serve you in Augusta. Both the first regular session and the first special session of the 132nd Legislature have presented many successes and challenges. Rest assured that I continue to fight for you, the people of Acton and Senate District 22. With warm regards, James Libby, State Senator.
Thank you. Moving on, Article two, to choose two members of the Conservation Force Committee for a three-year term. Michael Benjamin and John Fatula, who replaced Nanny Braeger, were elected in 2022, and their terms are expiring. Now, there are nominations for the Conservation and Force Committee.
I nominate Michael Benjamin.
Michael Benjamin has been nominated. Yes, sir.
I nominate John Fatula.
John Fatula is nominated. See none. I guess we'll accept the fact that there are two positions and two nominations, so I'm going to get a motion from...
Eighteen, three.
Okay, all right. So we need some, on these committee appointments, we need a few ballots, so we're not going to dispense with the voting, we're just going to get a few votes and declare them the winners. Okay, so as to Article two, Michael Benjamin and John Fatula are now re-elected as members of the Conservation and Force Committee. Thank you. Article three, we choose three regular members of the Warren Finance Committee for a two-year term. George Bachi, John Denikamp, and Joe Rumah, elected in 2023. Terms are expiring. When John Denikamp presides or being elected to select board, his regular seat remains open, and neither alternate has the same expiration date as Denikamp, as required by the ordinance. So I'm now looking for nominations for three regular members of the Warren Finance Committee.
Steve Bike.
Wait a minute, let's go with Leslie.
Steve Bike.
Steve Bike.
George Bachi.
George Bachi.
Joe Rumah.
Joe Rumah. Other nominations?
Roland Maras.
Roland Maras. Okay. Is there, did I see a hand over here? Yes, there is. Okay. Other nominations? Okay, see none. Make sure I get the right ballot here. No, it's the green numbers, yes. Okay, so it's the pink piece of paper in your package. You need to put, ideally, three names on there. If you try to put the same name more than once, it's not going to count. We used to do that, called bullet voting. We don't do that anymore. So if you put the same name down more than once, it doesn't, it doesn't get extra votes. So ideally, you would put three names, but you don't have to put three names. Just don't repeat them. Yes, you're going to come up with your card and put your ballot in the box, not to hang Make sure you bring your card with you. Everybody who wants to vote on Article three, I need to get your vote up here. We've got a great suggestion. Let's move on to one of the ordinances, which would be Article five. Now, we're not supposed to go on a order, so if anybody is against it going on a order, we'll go back and vote on it.
Yeah.
Okay. So, Nancy. Okay, I haven't read the article yet. Let's at least get the article up there. Well, now, we've moved on to Article five, and we're going to go back to four. And that, you know, we would need to vote on that, but I hear objections to doing that. Okay, so Article five, if the Town of Acton will adopt the Conservation Enforcement Committee ordinance as printed below, and I have a motion from Nancy to dispense with the reading of the article, you're a second. All those in favor of dispensing with the reading, please raise your cards. Hands down, those opposed. Except for not going to read it. Anybody have any questions or comments on Article five? No comments or questions? Okay, the motion is to adopt Article five as written. The Conservation Enforcement Committee ordinance, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hands. Hands down, those opposed. Article five is adopted as presented, as written. Now, in order to get to the next article, we've got to flip a page, and you'll be looking for Article six. That's the next article, Article warrant. See if the Town of Acton will adopt the Emergency Management Ordinance as printed below. The move, is there a second to?
Yeah.
The move is seconded, who's a, yeah. This goes Roland, make the motion. Elias Thomas seconded.
I'm up here.
Okay, so we're not going to read it. Are there any comments or questions on Article six, the Emergency Management Ordinance? Okay, all those in favor of adopting Article six as written, please raise your cards. Thank you. Hands down, those opposed. Article six is adopted as written.
Mr. Moderator, the motion for a weight section not written, is there, who made the motion, actually, who approved the article as written? Is that a motion that I can hear? Anybody? I mean, Article...
I thought it was Roland.
He made a motion to waive it.
Okay, I'm sorry. All right, we need your backup. Thank you.
Lawrence James.
Yeah. Lawrence Maras. All right, so we're, we made a motion to a waiver reading, so Leslie, give me a motion to adopt.
The motion is for Article...
Article six.
We did not approve Article five.
Probably did. All right, let's do six right now.
I make a motion to approve Article six as written.
The move is seconded by Roland, so Leslie makes the vote. What's the vote? Roland Maras has seconded it. Are there comments or questions on Article six? See none. All those in favor of adopting Article six as written, please raise your cards. Hands down, thank you. Those opposed. Article six is adopted as written. So we're going to go back to Article five. Article five is the Conservation Enforcement Committee ordinance.
I make a motion to accept Article five as written.
The move by Leslie and the second by Roland, saying to adopt Article five as written. Are there comments or questions on Article five? See none. Everybody in favor of adopting Article five, please raise your cards. Thank you. Hands down, those opposed. Flip to a couple pages, and on to Article seven. Article seven, see if the Town will vote to authorize the select board to dispose of surplus townhome equipment, except for road equipment, having an estimated value less than or equal to $5,000 on such terms and conditions as they deem advisable. If you execute any necessary options to accomplish said purpose, all equipment estimated at the value of more than $5,000 shall be put out to public bid. Proceeds received from each sale shall be placed in the general funds unassigned fund balance. Morton Finance Committee recommends approval of the article. Select Board also approve of the article. Leslie, what's your motion?
I make a motion to accept Article seven as written.
Second.
The move is seconded by Ray Lopez. Leslie and Ray. Are there comments or questions on Article seven? See none. The motion is to adopt Article seven as written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Thank you. Hands down, those opposed. Article seven is adopted as written. Article eight, see if the Town will vote to authorize the real estate, to dispose of that required property via proclaim deed by A, either A offering the property to the former owner, or owners, or if deceased to his, or their heirs, demisees, or personal representatives for a price equal to all outstanding taxes, interest fees, and costs. Or B, using the process authorized by 36 MRS Section 943(c), provided that if the former owner does not request that process, or the board is unable to list or sell the property as required by 943(c)(3), the board may sell the property through a competitive steel bid process, in which a notice advertising the sale of the property shall be published at least twice in a newspaper of general circulation in the county. For sales other than to the former owner, excess sales proceeds as defined in 36 MRS 943(c) shall be returned to the former owner. No select board member during the term of his or her office may acquire from the town any interest in real estate acquired by the town on account of nonpaying the taxes, unless the owner record at the time of foreclosure was the select person, or the son, daughter, spouse, or parent of the select person. Morton Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. Select Board also recommends approval. Leslie, what's your motion?
I make a motion to approve the article as written.
The move is seconded by Lee. Are there comments or questions on Article eight? See none. The motion is to adopt Article eight as written. Please raise your cards if you're in favor of the motion. If you hands down, those opposed. Article eight is adopted as written. Article nine, see if the Town will vote to have real estate, personal property taxes, first payment come due on October 15th, 2025, second payment on April 15th, 2026. Interest to be charged at seven and a half percent on all taxes paid after October 15th, 2025, and April 15th, 2026. Interest on evaded taxes to be paid by the town at seven and a half percent pursuant to 36 MRSA Section 506(c), to authorize the tax question to accept prepayment of taxes before taxing it with no incentive. Morton Finance Committee recommends approval. Select Board recommends approval. Your motion, Leslie?
I make a motion to approve the article as written.
The move is a second to Article... Ray Lopez, seconded. Leslie and Ray. All right, any comments or questions on Article nine? Yes, sir. Who's Alice, who you are?
My name's Andrew Johnson. My quick question is whether or not interest should be applied after the April 15th margin, as opposed to interest being applied to only half after October 15th? If I'm not mistaken, a lien is placed on a property with undue taxes, unpaid taxes, after it goes... That's my question.
You just dropped right down to the lien here.
Sorry, doctor.
No, you're good. We like the question. Jennifer, you don't think so?
So the system is set up to only collect interest after October 15th through the October 6th month, so it doesn't collect interest on the April payments until after that date. So if the first half is paid, or even not paid, it calculates it differently based on the current date. As far as a lien, a lien is filed until 18 months after the original taxes are committed, so the foreclosure doesn't apply. We file a lien after the date of commitment, and I want that committed. A lien is filed and stayed on for 18 months.
You all said, that's another question?
Can I ask you?
Yeah, you're confident in me, though.
Yeah, yes, sir. Yeah, so based on all that, basically, we heard from Senator Libby about how it's difficult for some types of people on fixed income, or even younger people, to stay and acquire homes. I feel like perhaps applying interest when the threat of foreclosure seems to be a big enough stick might make it more of a burden for people who are hard up to staying on loans. To what degree, I'm not entirely sure, but applying interest when they already have difficulty paying, maybe in undue hardship when they're already facing a threat of foreclosure. That's kind of my, that's where my head's at in terms of this article.
Jennifer, you want to add something, or?
I do, because fortunately, if we don't set a date and don't collect, don't set an interest date, then no one will pay their taxes on time. There's no cushion, and we're not going to be able to pledge accordingly for tax money that we know comes in in October, April. I can assure you that we haven't had a year-round foreclosure in many, many years, and whether we collect in the calendar from neighbors off leave, or just make a donation, we'll make sure that, you know, year-round residents aren't in that situation. So we have to collect all that interest, keep everybody honest, as far as paying on time.
Other questions? Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there other questions or comments on Article nine? Are there other questions or comments on Article Nine? See none, the motion is to adopt Article Nine as written, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Thank you, hands down, those opposed. Article Nine is adopted as written, Article Ten.
Who's reading Article?
Let me read the article first, let me, let me. See, Nancy, this is all your fault, you're confusing. Article Ten, see if the town will vote to pay wages and equipment for repair and maintenance of public ways according to the following schedule, and needs rate for by the hour. I'm not going to read all these things, but things are, okay, so now we can move. We're gonna read. Is there a second to that? Move is seconded Nancy and then Roland, the question is, and we need a motion on Article Ten, Leslie?
I make a motion to accept Article Ten as written.
Move by Leslie, seconded by Roland, actually Roland. Other, sorry, this is not very clear. Are there questions or comments on Article Ten? Rates of payment for various jobs. See none, all those in favor of Article Ten as written, please raise your cards, those opposed? Let's go back. Everybody's in favor, raise your cards for something, make some quick. All right, hands down, those opposed. Okay, Article Ten is adopted as written. Article Eleven. See if the town will vote to appropriate all the funds received from the state, on the state, from snowmobile registration order to local snowmobile plus, or maintain their snowmobile trails, on condition that those trails should be open to the public for outdoor recreation purposes at no charge. More in finance committee recommends approval of the article, same with the board of selection. Is there a motion on Article Eleven?
I make a motion to accept Article Eleven as written.
The move is seconded. Seconded by. Vicki, Vicki, Eric, sir. The oldie gets the hard rig, yes. Thank you, Vicki. So it's the move is seconded to adopt Article Eleven as written. Are there comments or questions on Article Eleven? See none, all those in favor of adopting Article Eleven as written, please raise your cards. Thank you, hands down, those opposed. Article Eleven is adopted as written, Article Twelve. How we doing? You gotta tell me.
You're almost done.
Almost done, just do Article Twelve. See if the town will vote to authorize select board to solicit bids, negotiate, and execute binding contracts, not to exceed three years for winter road maintenance. Said contracts will be awarded to the best qualified bidder. Town further authorize the select board to accept or reject any and all bids if necessary. More in finance committee recommends approval of the article, five to one, select board recommends approval of the article, five to zero. Leslie?
I make a motion to accept Article Twelve as written.
Is there a second? The move, the move by Leslie and seconded by Joe Ruin. Article Twelve is, uh, move is seconded to adopt Article, are there questions or comments on Article Twelve? Ray.
Ray Lopez, uh, I'd like to see if the warrant finance committee, I see they have a five to one vote. With that one vote, can they give a reason as to why?
Anybody remember who the one vote was that you were leaning for?
Leslie tells me that was me.
Did I tell you, this is a hard job, these guys have, remember what they did.
I would assume my, my rationale was more, I, I agree with what the road commission wants to do, put this, uh, out to bid, uh, one that brought it forward, but the reason why I disagree was, uh, the explanation that we had this with the warrant finance committee was that the road commission, uh, was to have minimal amount of input on developing that contract, uh, and that's what made me concerned.
Excellent, other questions or comments on Article Twelve? Will, I see you're, wait, whoops, sorry, we're here. Okay, hang on, Jennifer's got a response to, then, hang on, just a minute.
Um, so on behalf of the select board, uh, the, the reason that the warrant finance was told out was because, um, there's a very good chance we think and hope that, um, Mr. Langley will bid on the contract. So if he decides to bid on the contract, he certainly shouldn't be the one writing it and putting all the ABCs in it. We did, the board agrees to take input from him, absolutely, but if he decides to vote, if he decides to bid on it, then we certainly don't want it to look like it was a contract he wrote. So, but of course, we'll take some input from him.
Well, your turn.
Uh, well, I, sorry, I'm late, you know, it, it snows every year, I'm. So I'm just going to do a big recap on this, so, um, this year, I was putting my budget to ask the board to put the snow plowing up to go on that. Um, I've had this in my head for probably two years now. Our big reason is I, I can't get help on the plow, you know, plow by the hour, and, um, you know, the way the weather's been going, you know, we, we can't make enough hours anymore to justify what we're doing. So, um, I asked the board to do a three-year contract, put it out to bid, and hopefully that will, uh, help us with that snow plow, because, uh, if we don't do something, I'm not sure what's going to happen down the road. I can't do it by myself, uh, I need other contractors, so the way I can lay this out to the board is that we're going to split the town in half, there'll still be, like, District One, District Two, there'll be two bids, and, uh, the reasoning for that is that I'm hoping that will kind of keep the cost down and it takes the burden off of one person, because right now, nowadays, you can't, the problem is you can't get the help, and it happens, it's a big town, and, uh, I feel as if we split it in half, uh, you know, it will, basically, I'll take the burden off, and I think we'll get a better service out of it, so, you know, kind of, I'll keep the cost down.
Thank you, Will. Additional comments or questions? Okay, go ahead.
Talk on, this is important, I mean, I, with the contract, um, you know, I, I kind of knew this was going to be a topic, um, I, I really feel is that it needs to go out to bid, um, I think that's the only fair way to do this, is to put it out to bid, um, you know, I don't want, you know, see people, you know, other people out there coming after my father, myself, saying, oh, they just gave it to you guys, I'm, I'm not dealing with that, I'm not going to have that, um, that image that the town just given it to us, so, um, just to be fair and honest, I, it needs to go out to bid, that's, if fairness were to do this.
Excellent, thank you, Will. Additional comments or questions? Will, don't go far away, you're taking more.
My only issue with this is, we haven't got nothing saying what the standards are going to be. Will has done a fantastic job at the town because of the high expectation, due to the job that he's done, and that's kind of where my issue lies.
Other comments or questions, Will?
I mean, based on contracts I've read, we can word the contract any way we want. Um, it can be signed at two inches, it can start at the first weight, I mean, you read a lot of contracts, it's initially when the snow starts, is you have to be out there. Firstly, I feel if you write it like that, you're probably going to get a better service, and if you were to the point, you do not go home till it's done snowing, and that, you know, makes that contract, you have to stay out there till it's done snowing, like, half my crews out plowing right now, they don't want to be here, but I'm not, I haven't come here to plow right now, so, um, if we word it in the contract like that, they'd have to be held to that, and if they don't want to do their job, there'll be consequences to that, so, that's always going to be.
Thank you. Hang on, Will. James, you have questions or comments? James first, then, then we.
Yeah, James Kittredge, uh, so this is going to be, possibly going to be a three-year contract, is what they're looking to do. Is there any number saying, like, the past three years, what it cost us compared to, like, what the next three years might be? Because, like, a ballpark of what contracts have to be cost? Is there any?
Did anybody?
Jennifer, Jennifer can correct me, I believe for the last two years, the cost of plowing has been two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we're estimating that to hit it out, it will cost an additional one hundred thousand dollars. One hundred thousand dollars, for a total of three fifty. That is just an estimate?
That's a one-year.
Yes, yes, it is.
One-year, sorry.
A one-year contract is estimated based on the rate, uh, that is currently being paid in Shattuck and perhaps some other towns.
But it might be easier to budget if you know the total.
I'm sorry?
But it might be easier to budget if you know the total, if it is made.
That's the plan, is that, so, he's right, that the hundred and twenty-six thousand per district is what we've pledged on for the last couple of years. We haven't spent all of that, but we went through a few years ago, I think we had a special town meeting to go over that, so that's been the number that's been in us, and we've been comfortable with it. Um, the plan of this level, if this article passes, is on a very upcoming agenda, they're going to start working on the contract. They're going to work on the contract, we're going to get it out, and as soon as the contracts are brought in, uh, the board will award it based on, it will add a special town meeting, so one, I mean, special town meeting to appropriate the difference in funding.
Additional comments or questions on Article Twelve? Lee?
Do we have Will address the need to have a three-year contract versus an annual contract?
Will, Will, can you answer the question, three years versus one year?
You're reading like a one-year contract, I mean.
No, so the problem we're going to run into here is that, um, is that if we bid it one year, um, the chances of us getting somebody is, I, is min, is minimal, but also at the point is that you're not guaranteed, you're guaranteed one year, and anybody that has, you know, anybody's running a business, plows, or whatever, the price is probably going to be so high that the town isn't going to want to pay for it. Or the other reason you can do it is, that's pretty much the only reason, is the number's going to be out of control, because you, that one person is guaranteed, or if they own trucks, they'll buy trucks, get help, and like, you can't ask them, so, but on a three-year contract, at least you know you're going to have that income, and you can plan your next three years, and you're, you're asking a lot of somebody to have a one-year contract. And, uh, all the contracts I've read, I mean, I, I don't see anything of a, a one-year, it's always three years, there's times it's long, so I'd be totally against the one-year contract, and we're going to pay for it as a one-year contract, I can promise you that.
Any additional comments or questions on Article Twelve? Thank you. The motion is to adopt Article Twelve as written, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Thank you, hands down, those opposed. Article Twelve is adopted as written. Okay, back to Article. Article. Four. Yep, Article Three. Article Three, here's the results. Three that are elected, Joyce, Bakshi, Joe Ruin, and Steve Bike, those are the three that are elected. Anybody wants, I'll give them the, the numbers. No, nobody wanted them? Yes? They want the numbers? Okay. Steve Bike, fifty, Joyce, sixty, I think it was sixty-nine, sixty-nine, Joe Ruin, fifty-four, Roland, twenty-nine. Are we all set with that? Article Thirteen. We skipped it. Okay, let's try to skip that one too. Article Four, choose one alternate member of the warrant finance committee for a two-year term. Lee Robicar is two-year term, elected in June, two thousand twenty-three, became vacant when he was elected to a regular member, uh, in June of two thousand twenty-four. Steve Bike is deployed by the select board in January of two thousand twenty-five to finish out Lee Robicar's alternate position from two thousand twenty-three. There's no divorces in there, that's pretty complicated. Uh, is there a motion on Article Four? Nomination, that was the right word, not motion, nomination. Roland Waterhouse. Article Four, one alternate member of the warrant finance committee. Other nomination? See none, we've got one. So, Article Four, Mr. Waterhouse is the alternate on the warrant finance committee. Congratulations, Roland. Article Thirteen. See if the town will vote to reduce the amount used raised by taxation for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six, by anticipating municipal revenues to be received during the year. We use funds from the general fund undone, unassigned fund balance to further reduce the amount to be raised by tax, taxation. And I think this next paragraph in here is part of the article, this explains what, um, what these revenues might be. Excise tax, intercomplemental revenues, federal, state, and county grants and subsidies, licenses, permits, fees, charge for services, for instance, rescue services, and all other miscellaneous non-tax revenues, for instance, interest in families, investment earnings, et cetera. More in finance committee recommends approval, sixty-zero, select board the same, approval, five to zero. Leslie, is there a motion on Article Thirteen?
I make a motion to accept Article Thirteen as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Who's the second? I can't see.
Danny Krampf.
Danny Krampf.
Okay, Danny's second. Okay, is there any, are there any, the motion on Article Thirteen is without demotion as written. Is there any comments or question on Article Thirteen? See, all those in favor of adopting Article Thirteen as written, please raise your cards. Thank you, hands down, those opposed. Article Thirteen is adopted as written. Article Fourteen. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate one million, one hundred thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred fifty-one dollars for general government. More in finance committee recommends approval of the Article Three, three, select board recommends approval, five to zero. Leslie, what's the motion on Article Fourteen?
I make a motion to accept Article Fourteen as written.
Your second. Lee, second. Leslie, move. Are there questions or comments on Article Fourteen? Well, here we go. Okay, I'm going to go.
Go ahead the other way if you want.
No, go ahead, so.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to amend this article, uh, to read that the government body has no pay increase for twenty-five, twenty-six, fiscal year.
So what would that number be? You're proposing to reduce the, the amount of money after governing, the governing body to what?
No, I'm not, I'm, I'm not suggesting reducing the money at all.
Okay.
It's just the, uh, where the money goes.
So you want to add some words, basically?
Yes.
And the words would be that on the governing body, the amount would not be increased next year.
In this twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year.
Okay, so is that a motion?
That's a motion.
There a second? The move is seconded to add words to Article Fourteen, that the amount to be raised and appropriated for the governing body should not be increased for the upcoming year, the year we're talking about. Are there any comments or questions on the amendment? I do the amendments first.
So this point of perp case?
Wait a minute, go ahead.
So point of perp case, if you still want to raise and appropriate the one twenty-one, three-nine, oh-five-one, still give one thousand, one forty to the governing body?
That didn't change, so I guess the answer is yes.
The sixty-one thousand projected for next year would not be the accurate number.
So, so we had to change the number in the article, and you didn't know what number the voters are voting on.
Whatever the number is, it's getting paid this year.
Yeah.
I mean, that's lovely, we said, we said have a number, we can't, they changed the number, you've got to have something clear for the voters to.
I'm willing to do that, you could tell me the number that we're paying this year.
So is last year's amount exactly the five selectmen, because remember, we're going to make sure that.
So last year's, and Mark, I'm going to, it's okay, I'm going to call out our accountant, it's okay, um, fifty-four thousand, three sixty-nine is the budgeted amount of twenty-twenty-five. That's just the salary.
And that's the only thing that's in that account?
Well, that's, the officials in governing body is the, um, elected official salary, the social security, Medicaid, and the T F M L. Right, but the only number they're lowering, the only number they want to lower is the, so the selectman is in there with a three-point-five percent increase, so it went from fifty-four thousand, three sixty-nine to sixty-six thousand, so a difference of about two thousand dollars in salary for five selectmen, obviously, social security, Medicaid went up, and then the, um, T F M L A is in there, so I need to know which number you want to use. So, I need to know which number you want to use.
The fifty-four thousand?
Three sixty-nine.
Fifty-four, three sixty-nine, yes, sir. And so that's your motion?
Yes.
Is there a second to that, because this thing is moving around here? Is there a second to that amendment? Second is that here, yes, your name is? Dennis.
So it's a motion, it's a motion, Mr. Moderator, is to change the governing body by just the amount of the increase. We need to factor in the other numbers and then track that off with one point one, three nine, so, gotta take a minute, Mark's gonna help us sort out these numbers, but it's okay, I mean, otherwise, the voters gotta let me know exactly what number they're voting on.
If the difference, if the difference is just about small.
By round.
And I'm not sure you need to actually reduce the amount of the total, you're just gonna end up with the extra money.
So there are two ways you could do it. You can make spend that, you can make spend that, since it's a... Or you can just reduce it by $2,000.
One thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars is just the salary.
So then the amendment would be to raise and appropriate whatever $1,905 is less than $1,139,851?
So the $1,137,948, if we lower the selectmen's salary by the $1,903, we're lowering just three-and-a-half percent, but doesn't still have extra in the fight of Medicaid, because that number was based on the other one.
Back to Dennis, is that roughly your amendment?
The dollar amount, I'm fine with, Mr. Moderator, but what I'm stuck on is the board of selectmen not getting a wage increase. And if you just do reduce a dollar, they still have the flexibility to do that, and that goes against the intent of my motion.
Okay, so the way to do it is add wording then. Selectmen are not gonna get any kind of increased salary.
Twenty-five, twenty-six year. I would like to give an explanation on...
Let's get a second for your amendment, make sure we have all these on the same page. Okay, Mr. Long, I know we keep asking him, and his speech changes, so, Mr. Long and Mr. Long.
Do we read the actual motion exactly, or you want it one last time?
Sure, I'll try to do it. The state of town will vote to raise and appropriate $1,137,948 for general government. No salary increase is included for the select period. And we have a motion and a second, so we're gonna have a discussion about the amendment first. Some of these people up here wanna talk about the amendment. Bernard?
Thank you, I'm Bernard Bruder. I can't believe with the dollar amounts we're dealing with on all of our warrants and our school budget, that we're worried about $2,000 for our select board. Frankly, I find it really repugnant that we do this even yet to hear, Mr. Moderator. These people work really hard. I know that some people in town think, Mr. Moderator, that the select board gets their stipend for one hour meeting once a week. That's just not accurate. People, all of our board members attend other committee and department meetings during the week, they are appointed as liaisons, they're at public functions, I mean, we are so lucky to have everybody on here. We have a tremendous amount of expertise. You know, I mean, the town's finances and how they're managed have changed dramatically, in particular with Mr. McGurty being on the board. Mr. Walsh brings tons of experience in EMA work, fire department work, and so forth, and so do the other board members. I mean, I know less about what their areas are, but they certainly bring the same degree of dedication. If we have elected these gentlemen to the board, if we are confident in the work they do, if we respect the work they do, if we appreciate the work they do, if we want them to run again, I would suggest $2,000, not per person, $2,000 divided by five people is money well spent. And the last thing I will say on this topic is that some of the people who are opposed to a $2,000 increase are the very people that brought us to the point where we have five select board members instead of three. So where was the concern about the additional salaries for that at the time? That is significantly more than $2,000. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think Mr. Bruder said it perfectly, thank you, I'll be your reporter.
Additional comments or questions? On the amendment? No? Oh, okay, so you have, you're gonna comment later on in this amendment, Dennis?
I would like to explain my rationale for doing this. First off, I know what it's like and how much time it takes to be a selectman, as a former selectman myself, so I know what the job entails. And I'm not going to address the negative comments that were made towards the board and finance committee publicly, and the employees of the town did the same thing, I'm not gonna address that at all, because some people may say that that's the reason why I voted and made this recommendation, but it's absolutely not true. The biggest reason why I made this recommendation is because the board of selectmen and other members of the town hall made a $40 million mistake, and when they set the tax rate this past year, they used the same assessment on the town, it was the year before, and that's $40 million difference, which cost the taxpayers thousands and thousands of dollars. And I have no place when you make a mistake like this and it costs the townspeople, or a business, or employees, this much money, at the end of the year, if you give them a pay increase and reward them, it doesn't make any sense to me.
Okay, and additionally, yes, yeah.
As you recall, last year, at the, at this meeting, I provided a schedule that, for the first time, tried to project what the tax rate would be if all of the items were approved that were in the warrant. At that time, we did not have the assessed value of the town reported out by O'Donnell, O'Donnell, who was the town assessor. So I used the prior year tax rate or tax valuation as a basis for doing that calculation. The reason I did that is because, and by the way, that valuation increased eight million dollars, not forty. The reason I did that was by raising it, it would lower the estimated tax increase, and quite frankly, I didn't think that was appropriate. I wanted to give you the most conservative value of tax increases. When we actually calculated the tax, that was done by the selectmen and verified by Mr. O'Donnell, who is the assessor for the town, and at that time, the final assessed value of the town was used. So it was only in an estimate of the tax increase that was provided at this meeting last year that that difference was made, and simply because the numbers weren't reported out. So there was no error on the part of the selectmen. The tax rate was properly calculated and is audited and verified by the town assessor.
Additional comments or questions about the amendment?
I just wanted to point out, for those of you, for the number, for numbers, based on what Mr. Bruder said, the selectmen currently get $209,11 a week, with the increase that would go to $216,43.
Additional comments or questions on the proposed amendment, Dennis? So far, we're doing pretty good, we're not attacking...
I'm not attacking, I'm talking about numbers.
We're doing pretty well.
I'm talking about numbers.
Yep.
The, when they set the tax rate in August, they know what our total valuation is for the previous year, because everything is from April first back. On the state website, what I knew the valuation was, according to our assessor, as of April first, was $40 million more. This is very often reported, the assessors in the state, and that's where I came up with my $40 million. It's got nothing to do with estimates, it's got nothing to do with anything. I'm basing my decision on actual company.
Additional comments or questions on the proposed amendment? Yes, yes.
Just to clarify, you can't compare the assessment as of April first of a particular fiscal year with the state's full valuation, because the state's full valuation is a year and a half behind. So what happens when the state does its full valuation is, all the towns have to report their valuations by November first to the state, the state then has to, because everybody's on a different valuation amount, the state wants to make it equal, right, it's called a full equalized valuation. What they do is they take a full year to do an assessment, it's an economic analysis, to determine what the valuation is, and then they report their valuation on an equalized basis the following January. So the April first, for example, 2023 valuations that act and reported to the state in November of 2023 would not be included or analyzed and incorporated into the full state valuation until January of 2025, so, just FYI. So you can't really compare the April first valuation to a full state valuation.
Mr. Moderator, I would ask that you read these numbers, and then I'm gonna go sit down, these are the numbers I got from the town.
You read them. If you wanna make a comment about them, then you read them on.
2025, when it, the number they used to set the tax rate, was exactly the same, $1,191,248,727. The valuation for 2025 was $1,232,50,000. Data is data, regardless of what time of year you get it from, it's all the same. Our valuation did not change after April first, regardless of when you submitted it to the state. It, because it does not, your assessment doesn't change, it's everything from April first back, and...
Can I see that document, please? Dennis, can I see that document, please? I'm sure you did, thank you. This is a document that I prepared and presented, as I said, in the March 2024 town meeting. It shows, in fact, the same assessed value. This was an estimate, as I described. This was not used in the final calculation for the assessed value to determine the tax rate that was ultimately assessed for the board. So this is, in fact, exactly what I said.
Additional comments or questions, Leslie, this is on the amendment.
I just have a little addition, from 2009, the prior tax rate calculation was published in the town report, perhaps we should be doing that again, so, we know that the townspeople and taxpayers know exactly how we lower rates.
Additional comments or questions on the proposed amendment?
Two points, I don't think that, I don't think that the amount of money we're talking about means anything to these gentlemen on the board, and that's certainly not why they're gonna try to be re-elected if they want to. And second of all, it sounds like the problem is based pretty much solely on an error, right? Here's that one. No, 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 the fact, no, I'm not saying it wasn't an error, I'm saying it's, the dispute seems to be, where the amendment seems to be about the raise based on a perceived error made by the board primarily, that's the problem. Well, I'm not a genius, but I don't, I don't see that error based on the information that was given at the time, I understand Dennis's logic, but I just don't see the error that this is based on, so, this is my opinion.
Additional comments or questions on Article 14 as proposed to be amended? He none, the amendment is to change, raise and appropriate $1,137,948 for general government, and to add to words, no salary increase will be awarded to the selectmen. All those in favor of the amendment, please raise your cards. Hands down, those opposed. The proposed amendment is, does not pass. And now back to Article 14, as moved, the motion was to adopt Article 14 as written. Are there comments or questions on Article 14? Roland?
I don't know, Dennis, you done?
I'm done.
I object to this article, primarily because it's not a clear and transparent article. We're looking at a total of a million dollars, over a million dollars, and we don't have good breakdown in these categories. I understand the government officials, that's not a big, big problem. Office assistants, I'm assuming that's the people that work for our town administrator? Municipal management, what's covered there? These are just questions. Treasurer, no, not, sorry, bad answer. Elections, this is the next category, that's ten, ten thousand. Sorry. Treasurer's salary, I can understand that. Town administrators, again, salary. Just out of curiosity, what's the town administrator's salary at the current, in this current year?
One oh three.
So we're looking at giving the town administrator a $25,000 pay raise?
Wait a minute, this is going to a conversation now.
No, I'm speaking to you.
Just make your statement, okay?
My statement is, I don't agree with this article, okay? It should be broken down, if you're gonna say that the amount is $128,000, then tell us what that amount includes, okay? I look at it, and I'm sure probably most people do, I look at it as, that's a salary. I don't know that that includes Social Security or other benefits. If it does, then that needs to be listed out, otherwise, people have questions, and they don't necessarily know what they're voting on. That's my objection to this article, and there's another article later on that I'll attack you as well.
Thank you.
Warrant articles used to be written, excuse me, I'm not quite done, Mr. Moderator, warrant articles used to be written, and I have gone back and looked at warrant articles back to 1990. They used to be very clear, very straightforward, and very precise. When you start lumping things together, it makes for confusion. Now I'm done, sir.
Thank you. Other comments or questions on Article 14?
May I ask you a question, sir?
Sure.
When was that, when were those articles summarized? You're saying it used to be detailed, how long ago was it it was changed to be in the format that we have today? Because you went...
I have no idea, sir.
Because you went back to 1990? So, you know, it's unclear just how long it's been handled this way?
Additional comments or questions on Article 14? Motion is to throw out the article as written, Lee?
Yes. My point is that the board of selectmen have been very transparent throughout their meetings, when they've been negotiating and discussing the budget issues, and as a member of the warrant finance, I found them to be very open. And as a member of the Warren Finance, I found them to be very open in discussion with all the details that are supported by these numbers.
Thank you. Additional comments or questions on Article 14? Hi, Bob.
Hi.
You're up.
I'm curious to know why the finance committee voted 3 to 3.
The question is, is the vote a 3 to 3 vote? Chairman is about to tell us.
Yeah, there was a couple different reasons why. There were some members that felt that the selectmen should not get a raise for various reasons. And then there were issues about conflict of interest that the selectmen were voting for their own reasons, which is conflict of interest because they're not providing benefits. So that was the main issues with this article.
Additional comments or questions on Article 14?
I just want to clarify on behalf of the board, we did ask that same question, why was it a 3 to 3 vote? And we were told similar information. We went back to warrants all the way to 2006, where some of the members that actually voted against it were select board members. And all the way back to '06, which is as far as the 20 years that are on the website, selecting salaries has always been part of municipal management. It hasn't been so hard. So that was nothing, that was nothing new. And last year, the recommendations made by the same finance committee, ended the article forward as if it was intended. The other issue that we've heard was running all of them tomorrow.
Additional comments or questions on Article 14? Roland?
I will grant you that the town's website only goes back to 2006. I asked for information regarding warrants from 1990 through 2005. And I can show anybody that would like to see it, how the selectmen's salary was listed specifically in a line item.
And that's why it's the 20 years.
Additional comments or, Roland? Additional comments or questions on Article 14? See done, the motion is to adopt Article 14 as written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your card. Hands down those opposed. Article 14 is adopted as written. Article 15. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $2,110 for health and welfare. Health officer can get $610 and medical assistance to get $1,500. Warren Finance Committee recommends approval of the article. Select Board also recommends approval. Leslie?
I make a motion to accept Article 15 as written.
You're second. The move is seconded, see? So Article 15 is moved and seconded to adopt the article as written. Are there comments or questions on Article 15? Yes?
Hi, can I have a, who is the health officer?
I think that's Vicki. Vicki spent a health on. How many years has she been a health officer?
Long time. Four, five.
Oh, I know.
No, longer than, before our health officer, COVID.
Oh, that's worrying. I see you passed in March of 2019.
During COVID, you stayed home, though.
I didn't stay any longer than COVID.
Okay, no. I won't notice. Other comments or questions on Article 15? See none. The motion is to adopt Article 15 as written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Thank you. Hands down those opposed. Article 15 is adopted as written. Article 16. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $1,57,183 for public safety. Talking about the fire department at 970, 259, animal control 23820, emergency management at 18449, and other public safety at 44654. Warren Finance Committee recommends approval of the article as written. Same with the board of the selectmen, approval of the article. What's your motion, Leslie?
I make a motion to approve Article 16 as written.
You're second.
Second.
The move is seconded by Ray to adopt Article 16 as written. Are there questions or comments about Article 16? Public safety, Roland?
This is another article that I object to just because everything is lumped together. I understand fire department, that's not that straightforward. Did the fire department get pay raises?
Back to Ben.
Wait, 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 wait. That's what I call a conversation. We're not going to, you can ask the question.
I'm asking the question, sir.
Okay, you have another question? Is that just it, or you want an answer?
Is that a broad raise? All fire department personnel have 5% pay raises?
Continue. Other comments on Article 16?
I didn't get an answer.
Okay, well, we're not going to do the answer immediately.
I'm done. That's my last question.
You're going to ask the question, and I'm going to see if I can find somebody to give you the answer. If you have another question, we'll go there, okay? So is there an answer to?
Yes, 5% for all fire department personnel.
Thank you.
Go. Okay. Other questions? No? Other questions on Article 16? See none. Motion is to adopt Article 16 as written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your card. Thank you. Hands down those opposed. Article 16 is adopted as written. Article 17. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $205,000 for summer roads. District 1, $100,000. District 2, $100,000. Flat ground road, $5,000. Warren Finance Committee approves, approves as written. Select Board also approved as written. Leslie, what's the motion on Article 17?
I make a motion to accept Article 17 as written.
The move is seconded by Ray to approve Article 17 as written. Questions? Nancy?
Is this summer road maintenance?
Will here? He must be out here. So Nancy, you're asking exactly what that means, or?
Well, summer roads, what is that?
Okay.
So obviously Will is backed up by, we just for summer maintenance, whether it's raining the roads or dicking or tree wars, I mean, anything.
Okay, you have additional questions on Article 17?
Both summer roads.
Yes, sir.
Yep. Is this private roads?
No.
Additional comments or questions on Article 17?
I, Terry, I might, I was supposed to know this maybe, but I wonder why flat ground road is separate from summer road.
Good question. Why is flat ground separate? Anybody know?
So many years ago, I was with Warren, let's say 2018, 19. There's been long outstanding conversations about flat ground road, whether or not it's ever properly discontinued. In order to legally discontinue a road, you'd have to meet certain circumstances. This is before pretty much all of our times here, the main used to property owners on flat ground road that had to, from the town's point, nobody in our position was around during that time. Because it couldn't be determined on either side whether all the qualifications were met, was a file of the registry where the property owners notified by certified mail, there's a list of things that had happened when I called, that I've heard many years ago. Because that shouldn't happen on either side, to prove it was or wasn't, towns legal came up with agreement with the flat ground road owners. And that was voted on on his own article several years ago. And that's where the 5,000 came from. They came during maintenance.
Okay, other questions or comments on Article 17? Yes, sir. So give us your name.
Brightheart.
Okay. Step up and ask the question.
So I'm just, I'm trying to figure out, I'm looking at budget line items, and this one's a 6% increase from the previous fiscal year. And none of this explains why this should lead to an increase. I should ask the question in the first one. So is there, is it, what's the reason for a 6% increase? What's driving that? And it's across three different articles, right? So it's not just this one, it's summer roads, winter roads, and general.
So we'll deal with Article 17 first, the increase. Anybody have an answer?
Well, look, okay, so, but I just clarification, I just knew to this, right? Because there's three articles that make up, right? Now, this is a small item, right, and there, it's the general one. But in order to understand this one, I need to understand the other two, right, more in total. So if this one's not driving it, the other one, I'll just defer it.
Okay, if I can, Jack, under, you get the article number, the one that listed the rates. You'll notice there are increases in rates paid to, for various, Article 10, for various activities. Both the road divisioners wages began, whether they went to backhoe or various kinds of work that's being done. Those rates generally have been increased. I'm sorry, I don't have the percentage.
Which is probably, private.
It's principally from that. There could be material costs, you know, that, new culverts, things like that. These rates, though, are still below the state rates that have been approved, which generally is set as a benchmark. So the road agent, we offered to raise them to the state rates, because that we thought was fair. To his credit, he decided not to do that. So I think had we done it, the increase would have been more.
A lot of, a lot of equipment was enough, 1%.
And they're still below the state rates.
Good.
I just want to point out, in Article 17, the summer roads, those actually is down. Summer road was last year was $1,0762. District 2, summer road was $1,1217. So that actually goes down.
Not 17 this year, it's 17.
Come on back. Additional comments or questions? Yale. Comments or questions on Article 17?
Yale, over there.
I guess I haven't paid attention as much as I'd like to, but I'd like to clarify a question of what are summer roads? Are they private roads? They're not year round roads? Can I have an answer to that, Courtney?
No, it's not.
So it's not so much summer roads, it's the time of year, whether it's your, like, in the spring. It's not so much that it's, they're a summer road, it's the time of year they're doing the work. We break it down into winter maintenance, when you start plowing, sanding, consulting. Summer is just the remainder of the time. You're sitting on your spring, summer, he's doing the work on. That word is going to be a kind of a time of year. It doesn't separate roads. We still maintain the same town roads all year. It's just we're taking it from the spring, summer money.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
I appreciate the, I appreciate the question. I think next year we'll label it summer road maintenance, and that's your take on it. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions on Article 17? See done, the motion is to adopt Article 17 as written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Thank you. Hands down those opposed. Article 17 is adopted as written. Article 18, the see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $409,747 for winter roads. District 1, $126,811. District 2, the same, sand and salt. Stockpile, $156,125. Warren Finance Committee recommends approval of the article as written. Same for the board of the selectmen, approval of the article as written. Leslie?
I make a motion to accept Article 18 as written.
You're second. The move is seconded by Ray to adopt Article 18 as written. Are there questions about Article 18? See done, the motion is to adopt Article 18 as written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Thank you. Hands down those opposed. Article 18 is adopted as written. Article 19, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $580,400 for other public works, which includes the public works building at 21138, transportation at 5536. Other public works, the dams at 7,256. Warren Finance Committee recommends approval of the article. Select Board also recommends approval of the article. Leslie, what's the motion on Article 19?
I make a motion to accept Article 19 as written.
You're second. Who's the second? Yes, sir. Michael, thank you. The move is seconded to adopt Article 19 as written. Are there questions or comments on Article 19? Be none. All those in favor of adopting Article 19 as written, please raise your cards. Thank you. Hands down those opposed. Article 19 is adopted as written. Article 20. See if the town will vote to liquidate and transfer to the general fund $1,804 from the conservation committee reserve fund, which currently has a balance of $1,927. And the entire balance of the APH Capital Reserve Fund, current balance is $8,343. The Recreation Reserve Fund, current balance $30,620. And the Veterans Cemetery Reserve Fund, current balance $940. Further, the see if the town will vote to raise $21,210 and appropriate the sum of these amounts, which is $62,917 for parks, culture and recreation. And then we have the breakdown. Conservation, $504, 1,304. Acting Public Access TV, $16,699. Recreation Department, $34,414. Cemetery, $10,000. Warren Finance Committee recommends approval of the article. Select Board recommends also the same approval of the article. Leslie, you have a motion on Article 20?
I make a motion to accept Article 20 as written.
You're second. Burners, you're second. The move is seconded to adopt Article 20 as written. Are there comments or questions on Article 20? I see a couple people coming up. Nancy?
The first body is appropriating the unexpected, unexpended money back into the account, is that correct?
I'm sorry. You tried to, ask the question again, then.
Is the first part of the article, putting the unexpected funds back into the account?
It's, it's, yeah, it's, there are various reserve accounts that the town has that have been set up for certain departments. These reserve accounts really weren't being used. So we decided to close the accounts and transfer the money back into undesigned reserve or fund balance account. And use it to offset those budgets.
Oh, but they were unexpended funds.
Yes, they were unexpended reserve funds. They were just sitting there.
Additional comments or questions? Yes, Nancy?
Sam Singleton, question in regard to the $30,000 that's coming out of the rec reserve fund. That was originally for parking lots slash doing something with a playground, is that no longer getting done? So that?
Go ahead.
I think that Fergs and Mr. Roy, they're, the playground, if I recall, the playground article, the way that it was written, was all when it was expensed at the end of the year, that particular year, correct?
That's correct.
Additional questions, you have?
So my additional comment to that was, last year when I was the rec director and I was trying to push through to get some pieces of equipment to start a playground, I was told to not do that and that it had to wait until we had everything we wanted on an entire list. So that was the reason that never got pushed forward any further. The other thing I hadn't seen was, there's nothing on here for a rec director anymore, is in the department, rec department.
Recreation Department, $34,414. It's in that budget. Additional comments or questions on Article 20? Nancy?
Under cemetery, does that cover, that includes maintenance for veterans, graves, that's always going to separate article?
Yeah, the whole cemetery budget now, we're trying to get, we had a couple of the towns that I talked with Mark about. And we're still trying to figure out where some of that money came from. So now the whole cemetery budget.
So this covers work other than just putting flags and mauling veterans' graves? Thank you.
Additional comments or questions on Article 20? Couple of your old ones getting up. Okay, the motion is to adopt Article 20 as written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Thank you. Hands down those opposed. Article 20 is adopted as written. Article 21, see if the town will vote to liquidate and transfer to the general fund the remaining balance of the conservation committee reserve fund, the balance after the previous article passed, is $123. And the entire balance of the forest reserve fund, current balance is $480. Further, the see if the town will vote to raise $677 and appropriate the sum of those amounts, which is $1,480 to update the forest management land on town's forest land located on tax map 254, lot 5, located on the Hemo-Hibel Road. Warren Finance Committee recommends approval of the article. Select Board also recommends approval of the article. Your motion on Article 21? Leslie?
I make a motion to accept Article 20 as written.
You're second.
Sorry.
Lee seconded it. The move is seconded to adopt Article 21 as written. Are there questions or comments on Article 21?
I can't stop why we're doing all this stuff with the funds. Is that so that we can save everything else so it doesn't have all these slush funds around?
Well, I wouldn't call them slush funds, but they are reserve accounts that have been established by the taxpayers.
Additional comments? Mr. Lawrence, additional comments on Article 21?
Is there a plan to block the Hemo-Hibel property?
Yeah, so, the Forest and Conservation Committee had a workshop this past spring where members and myself went down to the... where members and myself went down to this, to this property to kind of see damage from storms and just some other things. And the, we're just trying to consider what use, future use, these public spaces could be. Part of that is having an updated management plan. I think it's been ten plus years since we've had that plan updated. But in order to make sure that we have, the committee has a good idea of what potential work or uses can be used with this land, especially with the storms, where there has been a lot of damage, it has changed a lot back then.
With all the old growth timber that's been cut around the town back in this very, very, like, limited amount of big forest, and I just like to believe that the town would not do anything with that property when it comes to logging or anything like that for the purpose of nature and stuff like that, because all the small parcels and private parcels have been logged. And I'd like to believe that we wouldn't be able just to log it. If you've got plenty of money in the bank, you don't need to make some money. And the damage from the storms, the logs aren't good, because as the damage happens, the tree dies, and the logs aren't worth anything. So, for us to log it just because it's damaged is kind of a, nothing's going to be worth anything, because it's all going to pop rock and stuff like that.
And the idea for this plan isn't anything about logging. If you talk to a forester who has the wealth of knowledge and has done so much just as liaison, it's all about maintaining the growth and the health of those parcels and making sure that if people who want to have logging drills or something, people can access those properties and appreciate them, have an idea of what we want, what that could look like. I know the, and some other properties that committee's considering, like, are there educational opportunities with students in town, if they can see marshes or different types of wildlife or grow the outback? So, this hasn't, doesn't have anything to do with so much, you know, like that? And this is just a plan, it kind of gives an outline of what that property looks like and potential uses for the town's benefit of spaces. Jennifer?
I'd like to just want to add to that, is that this article does, it updates the plan. If the committee, the board of select, decides to see that plan out, it has to come back for a vote. Even if the plan is dead, you say the compensation is going to be logged, it has to come back for a vote. Or this is why the plan's taken completely different.
Additional comments or questions on Article twenty-one? Nancy?
You know, back in the early two thousands, we did log that, we did do selective cutting on that property and sold some of the timber. So, we still, I assume these are still the funds from that operation?
Not sure of the answer to that. Other comments or questions on Article twenty-one? Being done. The motion is to adopt Article twenty-one as written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Make your hands down those opposed. Article twenty-one is passed as written. Article twenty-two, chief of town will vote to raise and appropriate nine hundred, excuse me, ninety-eight thousand seven hundred fifty-five dollars for outside organizations. I'm not going to read this list, more finding, unless somebody wants to. Please do. Do you want, so, okay, so, we're reading the list. Act and Public Library, three four thousand four hundred twenty-eight. Act and Act and Medical Food Bank, two thousand five hundred. Act and Chapel Historical Society, two thousand five hundred. Act and Chapel Youth Conservation Board, twenty-four thousand one hundred dollars. Act and Lakefield Water Shield Alliance, twenty thousand. Walts Light Improvement Association, two thousand. Area Men Unlimited, eight hundred and one. Orange Dome Visiting Nurses, one thousand nine hundred fifty-eight. Great East Lake Improvement Association, two thousand. Kids Free Row, five hundred. Lifelike Incorporated, six hundred sixty-eight. Taco River Corridor, seven hundred. Southern Maine ABC Nation, fifteen hundred. Southern Maine Veterans Cemetery, fifteen hundred. Sweetshire, five hundred. Trapping Center, five hundred. York County Community Action, sixteen hundred. York County Shelter, one thousand. More finance committee recommends approval of the article. Select board recommends approval of the article three zero two. Wesley, you have a motion on Article twenty-two.
I make a motion to accept Article twenty-two as written.
Your second. Seconded from Dennis. One second. The motion is to adopt Article twenty-two as written. Are there comments or questions on Article twenty-two? Ray?
I'd like to know why the select would decide to, to do this, why the select would decide not to. Hold on.
Jennifer?
Two of the selectmen are employed or have contracts with a couple of these nonprofits.
Did everybody hear that? Okay, so.
Two of the selectmen, one of them, I believe, plows parking lots for one of these agencies, and the other one works for this agency directly. So, they stay.
Other questions or comments on Article twenty-two? Bob?
Yeah, concerned with the nature of politics right now. It's going to be, and I'm worried about the, at the public library, to be funded properly so that, are we going to lose any federal funds that we get from the public library?
So, the question is about the public library, whether we're going to lose any public funds? Our library is here, at least. You want to talk about this?
The Maine State Library did lose funding in Augusta, and thirteen positions have been removed. However, the only benefit we get directly from them is our internet service through the Maine School Library Network. I'm not sure what that would cost, but right now it's free for us. I don't know what's going to happen with that.
Additional comments or questions on Article twenty-two? Bob?
So, we don't really get any federal funds?
No.
Do we apply for them?
There's no opportunity, there's no opportunity to apply for federal funds. Just the internet service.
Is it just because we're just a small library?
No, we could do the band service, but it is quite expensive. I'm looking into adding that. That involves into library loan. It's one of the programs that will be cut with this.
I was hearing on the news and stuff about Maine libraries losing the funding.
There are lots of libraries that are currently with grants, and some of their programs are running with grants, and that funding is being cut.
So, we don't have that opportunity to apply for those grants?
I have applied for a grant that we were awarded. We do, we apply for grants when we do, when we can.
Additional comments or questions on Article twenty-two? Being done. The motion is to adopt Article twenty-two as written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Make your hands down those opposed. Article twenty-two is adopted as written. Article twenty-three, chief of town will vote to raise and appropriate. A maximum of fifty thousand dollars as a contingency fund for the purchase of equipment or to use as they deem advisable. To meet unanticipated expenses and emergencies that occurred during fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six. More finance committee recommends approval of the article C to four. Select would recommend approval of the article as written, five to zero. What's the motion, Wesley?
I'll make a motion to accept Article twenty-three as written.
Your second. Lee, seconded. The move is seconded to adopt Article twenty-three as written. Are there comments or questions on Article twenty-three? Wesley?
I just wanted to explain the two to four vote. In prior, the prior warrants, there was a fifteen thousand dollar limit where it would have to come in front of more in finance to, there was advice and recommendation that was removed from this, and the committee felt that that still should be in there, and that fifty thousand dollars is a lot of money that, for the good of the public.
Additional comments or questions on Article twenty-three?
During one of our working meetings, probably one of the representatives told us that they were okay with this number and us not having to go to them.
There were two members that were okay with it. There were four that were not.
That's not how it was expressed at our meeting.
Okay. Additional comments or questions on Article twenty-three? Yes, sir.
Andrew Johnson, I'm just curious where the fifty thousand dollar number came from? Where that specific number?
Bob? Yep. The town, for the last two years, has reduced the municipal budget. It's actually gone down. This past year, the municipal budget has been down six percent. And the principal reason behind that is the town has been generating a surplus. And so, what we're trying to do is take the municipal down, town budget down. We don't want to drop it significantly and then find we have to blow it. However, as we're taking it down, two years ago, or maybe last year, we decided to put in a contingency budget so that if there was something that was over, was missed, or was an oversight, we would have some funding for that. The last year's number was thirty, thirty-one thousand dollars. That was after a reduction of, I don't know, three percent? Three, three percent. This year, we took it down, six percent. And I had made a recommendation that we increase the contingency budget. If we don't spend it, it will go back as a surplus into the designated account. If we do spend it, it will be discussed and voted on at a public select meeting. So, it was just belts and suspenders to make sure that we had sufficient funds to cover the town activities. Hopefully, these are your questions. Additional comments or questions on Article twenty-three? Yes, sir.
I was just wondering why they did away with the more finance committee being involved, where you've got more oversight and more people involved, so there's less, less issues? Because, you know, through the history of the town, there's been a lot of financial issues with whatever it may be. But the more people involved, the more transparency, and the more the people sitting here will feel more comfortable with any increases.
Anybody want to tackle that?
I would just like to say that it is true that last year, there was a different article for fifteen thousand that involved the, but there was also an article for the contingency fund that didn't require it. So, although we dissolved the controls and we wouldn't have vote, last year's contingency fund, the way it was worked, the thirty-one thousand, did not seek the advice or give the advice to the finance committee. And as much as we appreciate it, the way that the article was previously written, it says to seek the advice of the recreation. It's not, the board doesn't have to have the support. So, to them, it felt like we call a meeting, we bring them all together, we get input, and at the end of the day, five people, the three, two, eleven, makes that decision. So, it wasn't that it was left out. That article was totally, this copied last year's contingency with just a different number.
Are there additional questions or comments on Article twenty-three? Yes, sir.
Do you know what the, how much of the contingency fund was used last year?
I believe it was in the range of, I believe it was in the range of thirty-three to thirty-five thousand dollars.
He's asking how much we spent. All of it spent on the transfer station.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. It was all sent on the transfer. On the transfer station, because of the higher bulk. Yeah, bulk material coming into the transfer station.
It was all.
I'm sorry, but it was voted on at a, at a select meeting.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure it was all, it was all spent, so we're using the money.
That's the kind of thing that we were, we were used to. Additional comments or questions on Article twenty-three? Burner? Thank you.
I have a two-part comment. One is fifty thousand dollars is not what it used to be. You know, you can't even buy a car in most instances for fifty thousand dollars now. The other piece to this, for me, is the urgency sometimes with emergencies. And that's why we call them emergencies. And if I remember correctly, one time, there was an issue with a generator at the fire department, if I remember correctly. You know, I think there may have been an issue with a gate at the transfer station. And to try and coordinate, like, ten or twelve people's schedules in order to involve market finance in it, I think really could delay and muddy the waters at getting things done that need to be done. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions on Article twenty-three?
Historically, it's, it's never been an issue, right? They've had to have these special meetings historically in the town, and it's never been an issue to get the people together. My only issue isn't for the need of the contingency. I understand the need of it completely. We have used it. My only issue is, is getting more people involved. So, we know is, you guys aren't just picking something out of your hat and changing it. I'm not saying that's what's going to happen. I'm saying you could have that with different boards or whatever, and it's more, I think more people involved, the better, the better it is.
Are there additional comments or questions on Article twenty-one? Being done. The motion is to adopt Article twenty-three, I'm sorry. Article twenty-three is written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Make your hands down those opposed. I think we're easily, easily passes. Article twenty-three passes as written. Article twenty-four, chief of town will vote to appropriate nine thousand dollars to deposit into the existing reserve fund pursuant to main device statute, title thirty-eight, chapter two, 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 three, and subchapter seven, section fifty-eight oh one, dash one, to assist road associations in preventing runoff, pollution, and rate of rapids authorized by twenty-three MRSA, section thirty-one oh six. Road associations performed pursuant to twenty-three MRSA, section thirty-one oh six or title thirteen D's are eligible for funding. If the requirement of twenty-three MRSA, section thirty-one oh six at our neck is determined by the select board and/or the main department of environmental protection, the town shall fund the proposed repairs until the nine thousand dollars is exhausted or is due to be effective after twenty-six, whichever comes first. More finance committee recommends approval of Article five zero one. Select, board of select, recommend approval of five to zero. Is there a motion? Wesley?
I'd like to make a motion to accept Article twenty-four as written.
Your second. The move is seconded to adopt Article, Article twenty-four as written. Are there comments or questions on Article twenty-four?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I'd like to know what the existing reserve fund, a dollar amount, is.
Is there a number for the existing reserve?
It should be six thousand at the last. Yes. At the last special, I made any appropriate nine thousand. It's been spent in fourteen thirty at the one thirty-five. We've stayed out three thousand in the lakeside drive, leaving six thousand dollars, leaving the six thousand dollar balance.
Additional comments or questions on Article twenty-four? Being done. The motion is to adopt Article twenty-four as written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Make your hands down those opposed. Article twenty-four is passed as written. Article twenty-five, chief of town will vote to establish a reserve fund called the Hawk Road Projects Fund, to raise and appropriate thirty-nine thousand, which is funded for the purpose of reclaiming and raising a portion of Hawk Road, seven hundred feet, room one oh nine. Any funds remaining in this account after the completion of the repair or no later than six thirty P. dot in twenty-seven, shall be returned to the general funds, unassigned fund balance, and the town will be dissolved. More finance committee recommends approval of the article written. Select board also recommends approval of the article as written. Wesley, which motion?
I make a motion to approve Article twenty-six, twenty-five as written.
Your second. Lee, the move is seconded to adopt Article twenty-five as written. Are there comments or questions on Article twenty-five? Nancy?
So, this is the very first portion of Hawk Road, on the, of the one oh nine, and after that, it becomes a private road? So, it's the full portion of the town road?
We're looking for a definition of Hawk Road. Nancy's question.
Seven, from room one oh nine into seven hundred feet to Talanoa. That's all you're paying. And the rest of it's private, that's their problem.
Very succinct, folks. You like that? Ray, question on twenty-five?
Is the previous meeting, there had been a budget approved for Hawk Road at another town meeting? Can you tell us what that dollar amount was and why we need an extra thirty-nine thousand for that project?
Will? A question on Article twenty-five?
I don't believe we've ever put Hawk Road on the town warrant. I don't believe so. I've had it in my budget presentations, but I ended up not doing it. I don't think we've ever loaded on it, but I don't think it's ever been on, the town needs to do it. I've had it in my presentation for more finance, but I've never, I've had to cut it just because I've had to do all the projects.
Additional comments or questions on Article twenty-five? Being done. The motion is to adopt Article twenty-five as written. Please raise your cards if you're in favor of the motion. Make your hands down those opposed. Article twenty-five is passed as written. Article twenty-six, chief of town will vote to establish a reserve fund called the Levin and Road Project Fund. Further, the chief of town will vote to liquidate and transfer to the general fund, whose road cap- capital and LRAV fund currently at current balance, forty-eight thousand, two hundred eighty-eight dollars. See, the town will vote to, vote to raise three hundred twenty-eight dollars, three hundred twelve dollars, and appropriate the sum of these amounts, which is three hundred seventy-six thousand, seven hundred dollars, to the Lebanon Road Project for the purpose of reclaiming and paying a portion of Lebanon Road. Four thousand two hundred feet heading south in the Shapley town line to the Sanford town line. Two and a half inch base and one inch surface to shoulder rail. Any funds remaining in this account after the completion of repair, and no later than six thirty two thousand twenty-seven, shall be returned to the general fund's unassigned fund balance, and the fund shall be dissolved. More finance committee recommend approval, six to zero. Select board also recommend approval of Hawk Reserve on Article, uh, motion on Article twenty-six.
I make a motion to approve Article twenty-six as written.
You're second. Second. The move is seconded to adopt Article twenty-six as written. Dennis.
Mr. Moderator, I would just like to recognize the level of professionalism and the quality of work that our existing road commissioner does for the town. He, he just does a great job, and I'm really glad that we have him.
Thank you. Additional comments or questions on Article twenty-six? Steven Harris.
I just wanted to say, want to say.
Sure.
Wow. So this year, I came up with a five-year paving plan. I gave it to the board. They have, uh, all the paving from here on out, what we do is going to come out of the road assessment. That was done. So there's no picking and choosing, favoring, all that crap. So I had set up the next five years that, like Lebanon Road is hopefully our last big, big capital project for a while. You know, after this, I think it's gonna be a lot of shipping all the way. We gotta catch up on one of our sideboard. It probably will be a little bit bigger. There'll be, you know, another decent capital project. It's like, you see the sand board road, we have to dry that going up the hills, or on the copper, but the next couple of years, I'm hoping the paving is not gonna be very excessive when it is written down. So that's my plan.
Thank you. Are there additional questions or comments on Article twenty-six? Seeing none, the motion is to adopt Article twenty-six as written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Thank you. Hands down those opposed. Article twenty-six is passed as written. Article twenty-seven. See, the town will vote to liquidate twenty thousand dollars of the earned and paid leave fund, current balance twenty-five thousand dollars, back to the general fund's unassigned fund balance. More finance committee recommend approval of the article. Select board recommend approval of the article. Is there a motion on Article twenty-seven?
I make a motion to approve Article twenty-seven as written.
The move is seconded by Ray to adopt Article twenty-seven as written. Are there questions or comments? Leslie? Are there questions or comments on Article twenty-seven? Seeing none, the motion is to adopt Article twenty-seven as written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Thank you. Hands down those opposed. Article twenty-seven is adopted as written. Now we're moving to school board. Article twenty, Article twenty-eight. We can take five minutes. Sure.
I want to also point out, we have some folks over here, Odyssey is, Odyssey is whatever.
Mike.
Odyssey is Mike. We have some folks over here.
Yeah.
Article twenty-eight. To see what's on the town of Agnew will authorize the school committee to expend for regular instruction. School committee recommends to expend three million one hundred eighteen thousand nine hundred nine dollars for regular instruction on a five to zero vote. More finance committee recommends the same, three million one hundred eighteen thousand nine hundred nine dollars for regular instruction. Is there a motion, Judy?
I make a motion we accept the school committee's recommendation.
The move is seconded by Ray to adopt Article twenty-nine as written by the school committee. Okay, are there other questions or comments on Article twenty-eight? We're working on the equipment.
I'm under twelve.
Judy, do you have any comments on Article twenty-eight?
No.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adopt the school committee recommendation. Are there, assuming there are no other comments or questions. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your card. Thank you, hands down those opposed. Article twenty-eight is adopted as recommended by the school committee. Article twenty-nine, to see what's on the town of Agnew will authorize the school committee to expend for special education. School committee recommends one billion five hundred nine thousand seventy-eight dollars. More finance committee recommends the same. Judy, is there a motion?
I make a motion we accept the school committee's recommendation for Article twenty-eight.
Okay. The move is seconded by Ray to adopt Article twenty-nine as written by the school committee. Are there questions or comments on Article twenty-nine? Seeing none, all those in favor of passing Article twenty-nine as written, please raise your cards. Thank you, hands down those opposed. Article twenty-nine is passed as written, Article thirty. See what's on the town of Agnew will authorize the school committee to expend for career and technical education. School committee recommends to expend zero dollars. These, I know, is a question, why is this article here? Because the state tells us-
It's required by the state.
State tells us what our, we have to do for schools, so. Judy, assume there's no motion on this, or do you want to make a motion?
I make a motion we accept the school committee's recommendation of zero.
Okay.
Exactly, how is it, that is zero dollars?
It is zero, it's popular. Uh, the motion is to adopt Article thirty as recommended by the school committee. Are there other questions or comments? Joyce, you didn't, okay. Uh, all those in favor of the motion to adopt Article thirty as recommended by the school board, please raise your card. Thank you, hands down those opposed. Article thirty is adopted as recommended by the school committee. Article thirty-one, to see what's on the town will authorize the school committee to expend for other instruction. School committee recommends sixty-seven thousand eight hundred nineteen dollars on a five-zero vote. More finance committee is the same. Is there a motion on Article thirty-one?
Make a motion we accept the school committee's recommendation.
You're second. The move is seconded to adopt Article thirty-one as recommended by the school committee with the sixty-seven thousand eight hundred nineteen dollars. Are there questions or comments on Article thirty-one? Ray.
Can you give us a, moderator can they give us an explanation of what other, uh, other instruction would be?
Sure. Judy?
Is this our, uh, contractors, people that come in?
Judy's looking at John. Who's saying?
We have, we have, um, other instructions. We have people that come in, uh, and contract speech therapy, physical therapy, occupational therapy, things like that. That's where this comes in.
Other questions or comments on Article thirty-one? Seeing none, the motion is to adopt Article thirty-one as written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Thank you, hands down those opposed. Article thirty-one is adopted as written. Article thirty-two, to see what's on the town of Agnew will authorize the school committee to expend for student staff support. School committee recommends five hundred ninety-five thousand four hundred four dollars for student staff support. Uh, more finance committee recommends the same. Is there a motion on Article thirty-two?
Make a motion we accept the school committee's recommendation.
The move is seconded by Ray to adopt the school committee's recommendation. Are there questions or comments on Article thirty-two? Samantha, that's who you're coming up here to talk with.
I'm just having, uh, Sam Singleton again. I just had one question. Is that with capping the pre-k at sixteen kids?
This has nothing to do with pre-k. This is-
For the school entirely, I mean. Is that including like all the staffing and everything?
This, this is, this is for student staff support for clubs and things like that.
Okay, sorry.
Other questions or comments on Article thirty-two? Seeing none, the motion is to adopt Article thirty-two as written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your card. Thank you, hands down those opposed. Article thirty-two is passed as adopted as written. Article thirty-three, to see what's on the town of Agnew will authorize the school committee to expend for system administration. School committee recommends to expend zero in ten thousand eight hundred seventy-eight dollars for system administration. More finance committee recommends the same. Is there a motion, Judy?
I make a motion we accept the school committee's recommendation.
The move is seconded by Ray to adopt the school committee's recommendation. Are there questions or comments on the system administration? Seeing none, the motion is to adopt Article thirty-three as written, please raise your cards if you're in favor of the motion. Thank you, hands down those opposed. Article thirty-three is adopted as written. Article thirty-four, to see what's on the town of Agnew will authorize the school committee to expend for school administration. School committee recommends to expend three hundred twenty-eight thousand three hundred ninety-two dollars for school administration. Is there a motion, Judy?
Make a motion we accept the school committee's recommendation.
You're second. The move is seconded by Joyce to adopt the school committee's recommendation on Article thirty-four. Are there questions or comments on Article thirty-four? Seeing none, the motion is to adopt Article thirty-four as written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your card. Thank you, hands down those opposed. Article thirty-four is adopted as written. Article thirty-five, to see what's on the town of Agnew will authorize the school committee to expend for student transportation. School committee recommends to expend three hundred forty-six thousand one hundred fifty dollars for student transportation. More finance committee recommends the same. Is there a motion on Article thirty-five, Judy?
I make a motion we accept the school committee's recommendation for Article thirty-five.
You're second. The move is seconded by Joyce to adopt the, uh, school committee's recommendation on Article thirty-five. Are there comments and questions on Article thirty-five? Yes, Samantha?
I just have another question, sorry guys. In regards to the transportation, I noticed that it decreased for next year. And I don't know if that's just in comparison to what we've actually spent this year, knowing that we're down a full-time driver this year. We've been down with the time run earlier. So I didn't know how that was going to happen.
I'll let Mr. Ross in, as in that volume. He, sorry, Mr. Ross.
Thank you. Uh, it's down fifty thousand dollars. We renegotiated next year's contract for next year's budget based on the fact that we won't have that driver next year.
Additional questions on Article thirty-five? Seeing none, the motion is to adopt Article thirty-five as written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your card. Thank you, hands down those opposed. Article thirty-five is passed as written. Article thirty-six, to see what's on the town of Agnew will authorize the school committee to expend for facilities maintenance. School committee recommends six hundred five thousand six hundred eighty-two dollars for facilities maintenance. More finance committee recommends the same. Is there a motion on Article thirty-six?
I make a motion we accept the school committee's recommendation for Article thirty-six.
Second.
The move is seconded by Ray. To adopt Article thirty-six as written. Are there questions or comments on Article thirty-six? Seeing none, the motion is to adopt Article thirty-six as written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Thank you, hands down those opposed. Article thirty-six is adopted as written. Article thirty-seven, to see what's on the town of Agnew will authorize the school committee to expend for debt service and other commitments. This is a zero-zero thing, is recommended by the school committee, we have no debt service?
We have no debt service. I make a motion we accept the school committee's recommendation to spend zero for debt service.
You're second. Seconded by Joyce. The motion is to adopt Article thirty-seven as recommended by the school committee which is zero. Any questions or comments on Article thirty-seven? All those in favor of adopting Article thirty-seven as recommended by the school committee, please raise your card. Thank you, hands down those opposed. Article thirty-seven is adopted as written. Article thirty-eight, to see what's on the town of Agnew will authorize the school committee to spend for other expenses including nutrition. School committee recommends to expend four thousand dollars for all other expenditures including nutrition. More finance committee is the same recommendation. Is there a motion on Article thirty-eight?
I make a motion we accept the school committee's recommendation for Article thirty-eight.
Seconded by Joyce. The motion is to adopt Article thirty-eight as recommended by the school committee. Are there questions or comments about Article thirty-eight? Seeing none, the motion is to adopt Article thirty-eight as written. Please raise your cards if you're in favor of the motion. Hands down those opposed. Article thirty-eight is adopted as recommended by the school committee. Article thirty-nine. There's a couple articles that come in, this is one of them, where we're gonna need to record the vote, okay? It appears that the state statute wants a record of the votes made, okay? So, it's not a matter of a written vote. One of these things coming up is gonna be a written vote, but there's gonna be two that are, they're just gonna be records and hand votes. Kinda winging it here, we're not really quite sure what this means, but that's what we're doing. Uh, so Article thirty-nine, to see what's on the municipality will appropriate for the total cost of funding public education for pre-kindergarten to grade twelve as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act. Recommendation is four million six hundred sixty-nine thousand six hundred twenty dollars. To see what's on the municipality will raise as a municipality's contribution to the total cost of funding public education for pre-kindergarten to grade twelve as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act, which recommends four million ninety-nine thousand five hundred ninety-one dollars in accordance with majorized statutes type of Fungia section one five six eight eight. Uh, school committee recommends to appropriate four million six hundred sixty-nine thousand six hundred twenty dollars for the total cost of funding public education for pre-kindergarten to grade twelve and to raise four million ninety-nine thousand five hundred ninety-one dollars as a municipality's contribution to the total cost of funding public education for pre-kindergarten to grade twelve. And so, there's more here. The total combined state local is four million six hundred sixty-nine thousand six hundred twenty dollars. The state subsidy is five hundred seventy thousand twenty-nine dollars. And so, the amount required by the state from the town is four million ninety-nine thousand five hundred ninety-one dollars. More finance committee has the same recommendation with the same additional information. Is there a motion on Article thirty-nine, Judy?
I make a motion we accept Article thirty-nine, the school committee's recommendation.
You're second. Seconded is Joyce, seconded. Are there comments or questions on Article thirty-nine? Looks like we have some people, no, I'm sorry. There's people lined up just to do the counting. Okay, are there comments or questions on Article thirty-nine? Anybody know what's happening here? So, we're just gonna do a count. We're gonna ask you, on this one, to stand up, okay? Makes it easier for the county. So, all those in favor of the motion, if you're to adopt Article thirty-nine as written, please stand up. Okay, all those opposed to the motion to adopt Article thirty-nine, please stand up. Okay. I have seventy-eight to zero. So, Article thirty-nine passes as recommended by the school committee. Article forty, this one is a written ballot party, okay? And these are all, we're going to figure out state requirements, look at the how to vote on these. Article forty, to see what's on the municipality will raise and appropriate an additional local fund recommended a million eight hundred thousand sixteen, eight hundred sixteen thousand six hundred ninety-one dollars that exceeds the state's essential programs and services allocation by, by. The recommendation is a million eight hundred sixteen thousand six hundred ninety-one dollars as required to fund the budget recommended by the school committee. School committee recommends raise and appropriate one million eight hundred sixteen thousand six hundred ninety-one dollars in additional local funds and gives the following reasons for exceeding the state's essential programs and services allocation by, by, one million eight hundred sixteen thousand six hundred ninety-one dollars. Essential programs and services allocation numbers not fully support all the costs of a pre-k through twelve program. These, these funds support, probably not including the essential programs and services including transportation, nutrition, and other education support programs. More finance committee recommendation is the same. Is there a motion on Article forty, Judy?
I make a motion we accept Article forty as written. Second.
It's written, uh, okay, let me, let me, let me make sure we're doing it right. I guess the, the written article forty has the number that we need. Okay, so I'm okay with that. You're second. The move is seconded to adopt Article forty as written. Are there questions or comments on Article forty? Bernard?
We are sailing through the school budget and I just want to make sure that we take a moment, I want to take a moment and commend our committee, our school board, um, our teachers, our administrators. We have a superintendent that actually drives the school bus. I mean, that's how things work here. And we have students who excel because of their education here. And so, I just want to take a minute to lift that up. And I also want to say, this is a little delicate, uh, um, you know, I'm sixty-seven, so I don't get to speak as someone younger than as often as I used to, but for those serving us who I am younger than in particular, I, I just want to say I think you're absolutely inspirational and thank you for your service.
That may be avoided.
I also want to make a little comment on this, and the reason this article is in there is because the state, um, the state sets our EPS numbers, what we should, what we should have in here in Acton, because we're such a small school. Number one, we don't get very much back from the state anyway. Number two, um, these numbers that they suggest do not include our pre-K, they do not include transportation, they do not include, uh, full-time art, music, jazz, and STEM, the specials that we offer. So, that's why this, this article is so important.
So, I'm not sure, we have a motion on this one? Do you have a motion on Article forty, I think? You did? All right, so, the move is seconded, so now we're looking for additional comments or questions on Article forty. Ray?
Yes, I noticed that in Article thirty-eight, there was nutrition that was also mentioned, and we have nutrition once again in Article forty. Can you give us an explanation on that?
Well, we, we know that we have free meals for children for everybody now, but there are also other incurred costs that go along with that for running the kitchen and supplies and repairs and things that come up. That's what that's for.
Additional comments or questions on Article forty? Don't forget, this one's gonna be a written ballot. You have a green sheet supposedly. Yes or no? Check it off and bring your card with you. Bring your card with you, don't forget. Dennis, we want you to wrap it in. Odyssey of the Mind, you have to describe what's happening?
Yes.
Okay, do it.
I don't know if I need to.
Yes!
Oh, okay. Hi, my name is Lindsay House. I am the Odyssey of the Mind coordinator for Acton School. Odyssey of the Mind is a program that strives to build outside-of-the-box thinking and problem-solving in kids. Each team every year gets a long-term problem that they spend almost the whole school year working to solve. Well, this year, Declan, his O M team of four boys in fourth and fifth grade competed as state champion for state competition last weekend, and they placed second, which qualified them. Which that qualified them to go to world finals in Michigan this year. So, we have had the fifty-fifty going in order to help raise the funds to get there. So, Declan.
Oh, Declan.
All right, you ready? Do you want me to read the number, or do you want me? All right, so the number is seven, three, nine, eight, four, three, nine.
Let's read it again.
Seven, three, nine, eight, four, three, nine.
You're gonna win.
Congratulations.
We're still processing your vote on Article forty, Article forty. Lyons, do you have a question?
With respect to the Odyssey of the Mind, I believe that you applied to the Rotary Club of Sanford Springvale.
Yes, we did.
For how much money?
I didn't put a specific amount.
You didn't, well, I think, I'm not, I'm not sure whether this is positive, but I think that they were coming forward with two thousand dollars.
going to give them five hundred dollars.
And the, and the Acton School Committee is also going to be making a contribution from, from the school committee.
All right, the results of Article forty. Seventy-five, yes, two, no. Article forty is adopted as written. Article forty-one, then again, this one we're gonna do a hand count-up, or a standing count, okay? To see what some of the county's acting will authorize the school committee to expend for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand twenty-five, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six, in the school department's contribution to the total cost of funding public education from pre-kinder的孩子 grade twelve as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act. Non-state funded school construction projects, additional local funds for school purposes under the May revised statutes title twenty-eight, section one-five-six-nine-zero, unexpendable balances, tuition receipts, state subsidy, and other receipts for the support of school. School committee recommends to extend six million eight hundred eighty-six thousand three hundred twelve dollars for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand twenty-five, ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six, to fund public education for pre-kinder的孩子 grade twelve, five to zero. More finance committee's recommendation is the same. Judy, do you have a motion on Article forty-one?
I make a motion. We accept the school committee's recommendation for Article forty.
Do a second. Joyce seconds the motion. The move is seconded to adopt Article forty-one as recommended by the school committee. Are there questions or comments on Article forty-one? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting forty-one as, as recommended by the school committee, please raise your cards. No, excuse me. Stand up. Thank you. Stand up with your card in your hands so we can see it. Okay, all those opposed to adopting the school committee's recommendation, please stand. Okay, so, we're at the same level. Reports at seventy-eight to zero was the motion to adopt Article forty-one. Article forty was adopted as recommended by the school board. Article forty-two, shall the school committee authorize to expend said other sums that may be received from the federal or state, state grants or programs or other sources during the fiscal year for school purposes? Writing that grants, programs, or other sources do not require the expenditure of other funds not previously appropriated. School committee recommends to authorize the expenditure of grants and other funds per article. Now, if you're all looking at your sheet here, it says Article twenty-four. That is incorrect, but we're not gonna try to amend it. It's Article forty-two, is the article we're talking about. So, that last, when it says Article twenty-four, is not the recommendation, it's Article forty-two. The same with the more finance committee, the recommendation is Article forty-two, but it's just a recommendation, it's not part of the article. So, I'm looking for a motion on Article forty-two. Judy?
I make a motion. We accept the school committee's recommendation for Article forty-two.
Second.
Thank you. The move is seconded to adopt Article forty-two as recommended by the school committee. Would that change? Article forty-two. Are there comments or questions on Article forty-two? Seeing none, and this one we don't, we do anything except raise our hands, okay? So, all those in favor of adopting the school committee's recommendation on Article forty-two, please raise your cards. Thank you. Hands down those opposed. Article forty-two is adopted as recommended by the school committee. Article forty-three, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate fifty thousand dollars for technology improvements to improve servers, firewall, server room reconfiguration and consulting costs. School committee recommends to expend fifty thousand dollars for technology improvements. More finance committee recommends the same. Judy, is there a motion on Article forty-three?
Make a motion. We accept the school committee's recommendation for Article forty-three.
The move is seconded by Jeanette to adopt the school committee's recommendation. Are there questions or comments on Article forty-three?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a couple of comments on this one. When we first put our budget together this year, um, with all the extra unexpected expenditures that have come in through special education and some other places, our budget was up over sixteen percent. And so, the school committee had to really get creative. This was in our original budget. Um, but we had to get creative and figure out how we could get back down to a reasonable number to expect the town to support. And so, John mentioned one thing already, that the bus contract reduced. Um, we have reduced two teaching positions. We have cut pre-K to one, to one teacher, one, we have one section of pre-K. And, um, what else can we do? We had a real need for technology improvements that keep up. Long-distance planning committee has been working with our, with our technology man to get, um, to, to assess really what we need. Our technology system in the school hasn't been obtained for a very long time. It's been kind of piecemeal put together, and we're at the place now where we really need a good, a new server, and this is basically what this is gonna go towards. Um, and then, the on-term committee is working on where we will go from there, because we need a lot of technology updates. And as you know, every part of our school, from classrooms to offices to wherever, um, we rely on technology for just about everything we do. So, that's why this is in here as a separate article.
Other questions or comments on Article forty-three? Seeing none, the motion is to adopt the article as recommended by the school committee. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Thank you. Hands down those opposed. Article forty-three is adopted as written by the school committee. Okay, now what I'm supposed to do is check with the, I've covered all the articles.
We have covered all the articles. I know we want to give a little shout-out, but Easter extravaganza keeps going on this afternoon. Terry, I'm hoping you're gonna do that?
Oh, okay. Actually, we, I'm not running it.
The Easter extravaganza is on at the Acton Congregational Church and the Acton Town Hall. As far as we know, the bunny will be making appearance unless he's off a side of the road somewhere.
Dennis is gonna make a motion to-
And I just, I just want to make one, one more remark. I forgot in my last one. We started out with, uh, six, over sixteen percent as an increase in our budget, and by working the cuts that we were able to bring it down to five point something, five point four, so.
All right.
Pardon you.
Thank you, Judy. Dennis' motion is, is there a second to adjourn? Everybody in favor of adjourning, please raise your cards.